The County Commission Meeting is now in order. Mayor Mason is now beside me.
Thank you, Mr. Jeff Glover. All right, Chad, would you lead us in prayer at this point for that second name?
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this day today, Lord. Thank you for the rain that you've given us. Lord, let us all remember Charlie Kirk. Lord, and be with him and his family. Be with this nation, Lord. Give us some healing time. And just be with us. Be with us tonight in this meeting. Lead, direct us in these times of prayer in your gracious and holy name. Amen.
After you've drawn in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Stacy, will you do the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Richie Gregory?
Here.
Helen Bowes?
Here.
Terry Givens?
Here.
Billy Bass?
Here.
Greta Kirby?
Here.
Charles Kent?
Here.
Ron Pascal? Lynn Brown?
Here.
Scotty Barrett? Matt Inyard?
Here.
Glenn Lester?
Here.
Cordell Smith?
Here.
Danny Irazari?
Here.
Stephen Leish?
Here.
Eddie Stow?
Here.
Justin Malden?
Here.
Javen Krebs?
Here.
Tommy Vane? Junior Fields?
Here.
Connor McDonald?
Here.
Teresa Bush? Danny Huff?
Here.
Hey De La Rosa? Eighteen.
Eighteen persons. All right, we do have four. Thank you, Stacy. All right, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
All right. All right, item number six is the approval of the minutes of the August 25th meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Yes, sir.
Motion to second. Any questions, discussions, or changes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item number seven is the election of chairman and protocol team and the appointment of District Six vacancy. Uh, I don't know how it's wrote, but let's do the District Six first, and that way we'll have that took care of. So, at this time, we will take, uh, anyone that's interested in being an appointment of the District Six vacancy. I do have, and in your package, you have a letter from Ms. Erica Evil expressing her interest to be appointed. Is there anyone else here that would be wished to be appointed as District Six Commissioner? All right, seeing no one else, this time I want to take a motion. Justin?
I make a motion that we elect Erica Evil to vacant position for District Six for the remainder of the term.
Second. All right, motion. Second. Any other motions? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of Ms. Erica Evil?
Aye.
Ananis. All right. Ms. Erica, you want to come up and get sworn in again? I guess when, technically, you were sworn in, we'll do it again.
Yeah. Let's do it.
Welcome back. All right. I had allergies this morning, so now I got glasses. And with contacts, see, with contacts, I have to have glasses to read. Without contacts, I can't have to, I can't read with glasses, so. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
That I will perform?
That I will perform.
With fidelity?
With fidelity.
To the duties of the office?
To the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected?
To which I have been elected.
And I am about to assume.
And I am about to assume.
I do solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution?
To support the Constitution.
Of Tennessee?
Of Tennessee.
And the United States?
And the United States.
And to faithfully perform?
And to faithfully perform.
The duties of County Commissioner?
The duties of County Commissioner.
Representing the Sixth District?
Representing the Sixth District.
Of Smith County, Tennessee?
Of Smith County, Tennessee.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is the election of the Chairman of the 2025-2026 year Chairman of the Commission. At this time, I will take motions to for Chairman. Ma'am?
Jeff Mason.
Is that? I don't know. Well, that was, uh...
The good Lord's saying something.
I don't know if that's good or bad. If that's good Lord's saying it, then...
I guess.
All right. All right, any other nominations?
I make a nomination that, uh, the motion that nomination ceases and you be elected as acclamation.
All right, there's a motion that nomination ceases, and, uh, I'll be elected as by acclamation. Any? Second on that? Any questions or discussions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank y'all for trusting me once again to, uh, do this. It is, it is an honor and a pleasure to always serve at this, so I do appreciate that. Uh, all right, next we will elect Chairman Pro team. At this time, we'll take motions for, or nominations for Chairman Pro team. Chad?
I nominate Cordell Smith.
All right.
Second.
All right, Cordell Smith. All right, any other nominations?
I nominate Justin Malden.
All right. All right, any other nominations? All right. Seeing no more, we will, uh... We will do a vote, yeah, we'll do a voice vote, and you say who you want by your name. You do have to get thirteen votes to be elected in this. You do have to have, Jeremy and I talked about this, you have to have a majority of the body, not just of the ones present, so. All right, Stacy, we're starting with you, and just roll call.
Richie Gregory?
Justin Malden.
Helen Bowes?
Cordell Smith.
Terry Givens?
Mr. Malden.
Billy Bass?
Mr. Malden.
Greta Kirby?
Cordell Smith.
Charles Kent?
Cordell Smith.
Lynn Brown?
Uh, Justin Malden.
Matt Inyard?
Justin Malden.
Glenn Lester?
Cordell Smith.
Cordell, Cordell Smith can vote, right?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Cordell Smith.
Danny Irazari?
Cordell Smith.
Stephen Leish?
Cordell Smith.
Eddie Stow?
Justin.
Erica Evil?
Cordell Smith.
Justin Malden?
Myself.
Javen Krebs?
Justin Malden.
Junior Fields?
Cordell Smith.
Connor McDonald?
Malden.
Danny Huff?
Cordell.
Ten for Cordell, nine for Justin.
That's what I had. All right, so no one received a majority? We will go and renominate and do it again. All right, at this time, I will take motions again for Chairman Pro team.
Cordell Smith.
All right, you got...
I was gonna say, I don't think we need to re-nominate.
I'll just revote. All right, we'll just revote it, Stacy.
Richie Gregory?
Justin.
Helen Bowes?
Cordell Smith.
Terry Givens?
Mr. Malden.
Billy Bass?
Mr. Malden.
Greta Kirby?
Cordell Smith.
Charles Kent?
Cordell Smith.
Lynn Brown?
Justin Malden.
Matt Inyard?
Malden.
Glenn Lester?
Cordell Smith.
Cordell Smith?
Cordell Smith.
Danny Irazari?
Cordell Smith.
Stephen Leish?
Cordell Smith.
Eddie Stow?
Justin.
Erica Evil?
Cordell Smith.
Justin Malden?
Myself.
Javen Krebs?
Justin.
Junior Fields?
Cordell Smith.
Connor McDonald?
Malden.
Danny Huff?
Cordell.
It's the same.
Connor, can we elect, uh, nominate somebody else? See what that does and split it? Well, that's what I was gonna do, re-nominate, or somebody pull, I mean, yeah.
I will withdraw from consideration, so we can move on.
All right. All right, so...
Motion to elect Cordell Smith by acclamation.
Second.
All right, motion and second to elect Cordell Smith by acclamation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Cordell, you've turned to Pro team once again. All right, got that over with. All right, next is the amendment to approval of the agenda. Uh, the only thing I have is we need to flip Resolutions Three and Four, because we need to do the rules package before we do the regular meetings and the, and the committee list behind the rules package that way. So, at this time, I want to take a motion to amend the agenda with flipping Resolutions Three and Four.
Motion to amend.
Okay? Motion and second, any other amendments?
Who's second?
Connor. All right, seeing none. Was that Connor?
I'll take it.
I can't see, so it's, you know...
Do you want these?
No, these, the glasses are worse. I had contact problems this morning, so now I got real glasses on, I can't see, I can't see here with glasses on, I can't see out there with that glasses on, so. It's just one of them days. It didn't go all right. Allergies. All right, so we have a motion to amend the agenda to flip the Resolution Three and Four. Any other? I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, amendments again. All right, that is done. All right, next is the County Mayor Report. Uh, update you on, so windows, had a meeting with, uh, ECD and the Historic Society last week. We told them again that we intend to go with the vinyl replacement windows, which are much, much more, less cheap, less expensive option, and a much better energy efficient option, and they come with a year or a lifetime warranty. Uh, the, both of those agreed that we could do that, and it would not be any, any ramifications to the grant, so that's where we're at with that. Uh, HVAC was supposed to go to bid today, didn't get in in time. It will go to bid next week. We did bid and rebid the sale at the, at the landfill. It was rebid last week, and we were able to save some money and change a few scope things around, and, uh, that bid was awarded to Wright Brothers. That's all I've got tonight. Any questions for me?
How much were the windows? Do we know that yet?
Two, right at $280,000. I don't remember the exact number.
Okay.
Yeah, which is not terrible. About what are we, well, I mean, for that many windows and that many windows, yeah.
There are a lot of weird strength windows, too.
Oh, yeah. Matthew?
Uh, Wright Brothers on the landfill, what time will it, when will they be able to sign those?
Uh, they're supposed to, we issued on PO last week, so they should, they were just gonna start mobilizing as soon as possible. Of course, now that we've, we're at the bid, it starts raining, that's okay, we, there's plenty of those, okay. Still targeted for first quarter of '26 to be done. Any other questions for me? All right, you have your financial reports. Daisy handed you a last minute cash flow. You have any questions for her? All right, seeing none, you have your committee reports. Uh, under new business, you have your approval letter for the fiscal year 2026 budget. The only thing in there that I will, that one thing is, is the, uh, the 207 budget amendment adding the interest and, uh, principal payment is in your budget amendment tonight, so that is took care of. The other items will need to be discussed through budget and, uh, probably with board on how, on those fund balance policies, so. Got that. Any questions on the fiscal year budget letter? All right, seeing none. Matthew?
Uh, committee reports, I didn't see one for ag extension, did they not send that over?
It was last Monday?
Yeah.
I think we did that.
I'll make sure you get one.
All right, didn't get it yet. All right. Moving on, item B, resolutions. You have a one-on-one budget amendment and a 207 budget amendment. Uh, take a motion to group and approve those or vote separately.
Motion to group and approve.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Fields, second by Commissioner McDonald. Any questions, discussions on those budget amendments? All right, seeing none, roll call, please, Stacy.
Richie Gregory?
Yes.
Helen Bowes?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Lynn Brown?
Yes.
Matt Inyard?
Yes.
Glenn Lester?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Danny Irazari?
Yes.
Stephen Leish?
Yes.
Eddie Stow?
Yes.
Erica Evil?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Javen Krebs?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Connor McDonald?
Yes.
Danny Huff?
Yes.
You did this.
All right, thank you. All right, item number four is Resolution 08-2025-12. It is the rules for the Smith County Commission that was tabled from the August meeting. Uh, Mr. Justin Malden is sponsor, so he has some amendments he wants to talk to you about, so I'll turn it over to you.
Mr.? I'll go ahead, and I will make a motion to approve Resolution of Five, 2025-12, with the amendments. Let me set the page, I'll get that motion out there.
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second.
Uh, so, everybody's had a month to go over the rules. Uh, talking with the mayor and the county attorney, I want to offer some amendments. Uh, and Jayden and Connor, I'll speak up if I'm, uh, misstating anything here from what the committee discussed. The First Amendment is simply adding a line so that we have language, so we can do what we get tonight as far as the rules. Commission may move or cancel their monthly meeting if the need arises. So all that is in there just to make sure we have the flexibility to, to do what we're doing, and then very next, you will see, there's gonna be a couple of meetings that will not be at the Ag Center. So, uh, and the time is shifted in what's being proposed, so that's all that that is for. The rest of the language is specifically around amending the agenda process. So it deletes from Rule Three, specifically Rule 3.7, that says that the clerk will prepare the agenda for consideration by the commission. So it eliminates that entire line, that just comes out, and then it replaces the language in Rule Nine, which is agenda preparation. Really, all it is doing, everything else remains the same. It just says, requests for the agenda will go to the chairperson and their designate instead of chairperson and clerk. So it replaces clerk with designate, and then it defines the designate can be the clerk or the county mayor's office. Same thing for 9.2. It, it says that the clerk can designate either the clerk or the county mayor to prepare the, to draft the agenda for approval versus the clerk's office. When we went through committee, all these other, all the other counties, it's the clerks that does it for the rules that we were able to gather. There are a few counties out there with the county mayor's office does do this. What this does is it leaves the discretion of who prepares the agenda or helps the mayor, or the chairperson prepare the agenda in the case of the mayor, and he has always used Stacy to help with that. He can continue that if he wants to. We thought statutorily, and Jeremy has clarified, that the clerk had to do the agenda preparation process, but that is not statutory what has to happen. It just offers the flexibility to the chairperson to be able to decide, do we want to leave it with the mayor's office as is, or we want the clerk's office to be the ones to do it.
Connor? I think I had a sick child last, can't remember what happened last meeting, but I didn't get a chance to speak on this thing. I think, I appreciate Justin and Javen and the former Commissioner Casey O'Rourke for all the effort that they put in on these as well. Um, I think this just makes sense. We ought to have some rules that we operate by. I personally have not been able to find a county that doesn't have some form of rules or guidelines around how their commission operates. It may be out there, but I, even Triadsville County, even small counties, the smaller I could find, they all had some form of guidelines around how this body operates. And I think that's important, because, and I can confidently say, I have no issues with how our body has been, you know, overseen by the chairman, by the mayor, but I think part of our jobs is to protect and look for situations where we don't have a good relationship, potentially with the mayor. I, I think it's our duty to protect the commission and our authority, which is, you know, amendments and things like that to the budget. And the situation, I'm confident this would never happen with Jeff Mason as mayor, but the situation could arise, and there's nothing we can do to stop it, where, say, we have a new mayor, and he says, you know what? I'm at odds with the clerk's office, they want to amend their agenda, I'm not bringing it. There's nothing we can do to force that amendment to come to the bottom. Say there's that odds with a future mayor and the sheriff, and the sheriff says, I need to pay overtime, I need to buy new equipment, and the mayor says, I'm not letting you bring it. There's no mechanism for us to force ourselves to have the opportunity to vote on those items. Again, I'm not worried about this at all with Jeff Mason, but I think part of our job is to look out for situations to protect this body and our authority. I think it makes sense, there's mechanisms to change anything in there that we get into it and say, this isn't working, we can change anything that we want to, but I think it's important to have some baseline rules that we operate by.
Any other questions, discussion?
I just, I'll just say this, functionally, this isn't going to change a lot of what we already do, which is just formalizing...
Basically, you're just saying what we do.
Yes, yeah, it's really just formalizing it, and then it's a tool when we do have, which Ms. Evil has already been on the commission, so I'm not going to say, we have a new commissioner coming in, something it, it allows them to get a better grasp of how we operate, how we do things, too, as part of that process.
And I, I appreciate you being willing to amend it to where we could keep the agenda and the packet prep in our office, because it's something that we, we pride ourselves, you know, doing, and they, they get busy and...
And we had, I will say this, the committee didn't have an issue with how it's being done currently. We just thought statutorily it had to be the clerk's, I, we misunderstood it the way, because may versus something, when you get into the nitty gritty of the language and how, you know, it was a may versus shall issue, and, and I thought it said shall, because that part does not say shall, so.
All right, any other questions, discussions on the rules package? All right, let's vote. All right, uh, let's roll call this, just to make sure.
Richie Gregory?
Yep.
Helen Bowes?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Lynn Brown?
Yes.
Matt Inyard?
Yes.
Glenn Lester?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Danny Irazari?
Yes.
Stephen Leish?
Yes.
Eddie Stow?
Yes.
Erica Evil?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Javen Krebs?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Connor McDonald?
Yes.
Danny Huff?
Yes.
Ananis.
All right, thank y'all. All right, so we did, forward, let's go back to three, and that's established in the Smith County Commission Regular Meetings for October 3, September. All right, so I got that. I was gonna, I didn't want to give these till we figure out what's under the rules, right? Yet this, you got your, your dates and your committee list. All right, you have your commission meeting dates for next year. Uh, basically, it's the same as we did this year. We set that Monday, June the 8th, as our budget committee presenting a budget that night, like we have done in the past, where you bring the budget two or three weeks before meetings, gives everybody time to review it, go over it, ask questions that night in time, and regular business, and then the 29th, now that, you know, that's, that's always our goal, is to pass on June before July 1st. Uh, we've not done it the last two years, but that's always the goal, and, you know, that's, that's there, and everything else is there, and if anything changes as far as locations, we will be sure to tell you on that, so. Any questions or discussions on the, uh, the resolution for the, uh, commission regular meetings?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On the packet, uh, the dates, the year is wrong on that. Says 2025, January 26, 2025.
Okay.
Just, I'm offering amendment for that.
Thank you.
I've got the correction on it, I just, with it being just the date, I'm not sure if I would need to do it.
All right, yeah, that's right. Jeremy caught that this morning, yes, that's exactly right. Thank you, sir, for bringing that, your attention, you know. All right, so you make that mention, will that change? So Stacy will make that change. All right, any other questions, discussions on that? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Max.
This one, Max, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to follow the policy. Uh, Connor's name is misspelled on committee assignments.
Okay.
Contest to it. Give my name to the seat. Although that is unique, usually it's ER.
Oh, well, miss, you know, sometimes you, you win those. All right, we'll change that, change misspelled there. See, I, I guess wrong there.
Line is to...
All right, so we'll make the changes on the misspelling. Again, that's, uh, so, we'll go from there. Any other questions or discussions, or my failure at spelling?
Are we approving both of these, or just the commission papers right now?
Uh, we could re-prove both of them if you want, Jeremy. If y'all are good with the committee list, I mean, if you, that's the hardest part, it's, it's trying to make that matrix work, but, because you added a comedian, it felt everything to balance off a little bit. Yes, sir.
Uh, make a motion to approve the resolution for committee meetings and the committee assignments.
All right, I have a...
With, with corrections.
With corrections, with spelling corrections, thank you. All right, any questions, discussions on that, changes? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so, got that took care of. All right, item C is notaries. I have a list of notaries for you, take a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion to approve, second.
Second.
Matt, anything that first, have a motion and a second to approve notaries? Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion approved. All right, one last thing. I have a, so, in order to, to do what we're supposed to do as committees, I have a, here, so come up and grab one of these before you leave. Uh, Solid Waste will meet next Tuesday at 6:00 in the Turner Building for their first meeting of this year. Uh, Thursday, October the 2nd, at the Ag Center Small Room, at 5:00, we'll start with Public Safety, and then... At five o'clock, we'll start with public safety and then either five thirty or the adjournment of public safety, whichever comes last. We'll do grounds, buildings, and roads, at six will be, uh, po- policy, sorry, I added that in there, policy and then budget. Is that right, yeah. Public safety at five, grounds, bus five thirty, policy at six, and budget at six thirty, okay, that's why I had extra.
No ethics?
No, ethics don't mess with us needed. No, we don't want an ethics committee meeting.
I mean, we can start probing if you want to.
Do what?
We can start probing.
Yeah, we, yeah, yeah.
What date is that?
Right. That is, that, that'd be next Thursday, October second, I'll email you this out tomorrow with, uh, boy, I haven't even contacted since, it's really been a job today, but that's my fault. So you have that, but we'll send that to you tomorrow, just that, so. What we'd like to do is, is, is just a quick meeting to elect your chairman and your vice chair, your secretary, and then, uh, set your meeting schedule and then you go from there as far as regular, regular meetings. All right, any other business before the, the mission tonight?
Mayor, I'll just say, I don't know what the handout you have is for everybody, but the, the solid, or what you're referencing, Solid Waste, Public Safety, Buildings and Grounds and Roads, and Policy and Rules, the description of what all four of those meetings are is in the rules and it's very detailed about what each committee does and oversees, so if you can look over that beforehand, you'll know exactly what each committee does. We try to group things in the rules committee that make sense together, so roads and bridges, grounds, buildings, county buildings, all kind of goes together, but the specific descriptions of what each committee does is in the new rules package.
Yes, thank you, Connor, for that. All right, any other questions or discussion or business? Seeing none, I.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn, action. Motion in second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
You are adjourned, thank you.